जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे जशो दानंदा ग्रोज जानो राम जशो दानंदा ग्रोज जानो राम जामो न पीरा बोलो चार जामो न पीरा बोलो चार जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे जय राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वरन्हारे
हरे कृष्णा
अभी बोले आमकी आज जाना भे कबून जाना भे
हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा हम ज्ञान तेवरिंदर श्याम हंजनी श्लोक याचक्षुर में तमिल दशम शिवगर्व नमो विष्णु पदायक शुभ श्टैपुथरी शुभ भक्ति चार्ल शामिल नहीं थी नाम श्लेख द चेस शुभ प्रणेत भाग में नाम चले शुभ दातंत्रिक पद नमो विष्णु पदायक शुभ श्टैपुथरी शुभ भक्ति विदांश नमस्ते शारीरिक देवी गौरवानी प्रचारिण निर्विष्ट शुन्य आदि क्षण देता रहने पांछा कल्पित रुभस्य कृपा सेंधु बेचपति तनाम पामने भयोष्णर भयनमुनि जय श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य प्रभु नित्यानंद श्यादेव दादा शिवम शादी गौर भक्त हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा सो वेलकम ऑल डी डोटीज़ फॉर दिस मोस्ट अस्तिष्ट एसोसिएशन एवरीथिंग इसे बिल्कुल ही नराज और जोड़े भी कंटेंट
सो दें कृष्ण बालराम वेयर अलावन विद द कॉवर्ड बॉयज़ दे वे थ्री टू सी मथुरा सिटी दे वे फ्रॉम द फॉरेस्ट ऑफ़ रिनावन दे कैम तू द सिटी एंड दे वे वेरी एक्साइटेड एंड दे वे वेर चारियट्स गोइंग थ्रू द स्ट्रीट्स हॉर्सेस विद पीपल राइडिंग अन द हॉर्सेस पीपल राइडिंग अन एलिफेंस एंड एवरीबॉडी सिंस तू बी सो ब्यूटीफुली ड्रेस्ड एंड ऑल द वीमेन दे हर्ड अबाउट कृष्ण एंड बालराम एंड दे कैम ऑन तू देर विंडोज़ एंड कैम ऑन तू द रूफ टॉय एंड सीइंग कृष्ण एंड बालराम दे फेल्ट दे दिस द मोस्ट ब्यूटीफुल पर्सनैलिटी दे दे अन एवरी सी एंड दे इमीडिएटली वांटेड तू एम्ब्रेस इट एंड सम ऑफ़ देम फेंटेड जस्ट सीइंग द ब्यूटी ऑफ़ कृष्ण दें कृष्ण सॉल अन वाशमैन कैरिंग बिग पा बिग अमाउंट ऑफ़ बंडल ऑफ़ फैंसी क्लोथ सो ही आस्ट द वाशमैन सो व्हाट यू कैरिंग? आई एम कैरिंग द क्लोथ फॉर कमसर ओह यू सी वे आर इनवाइटेड गेस्ट्स ऑफ़ कमसर विल यू प्लीज़ गिव अस सम ड्रेसेस? बिकॉज़ तू गो तू द रॉयल कोर्ट वे हैव तू बी प्रॉपर्टी ड्रेस्ड एंड देट वाशमैन बिकम वेरी अपसेट यू विलेज बॉयज़ वेयर ड्रेस्ड ओनली इन कॉपिन्स यू डेर तू गेट द ड्रेस ऑफ़ द किंग डिड योर फादर एंड ग्रैंडफादर एवं सीन ड्रेसेस लाइक दिस? एंड गो बैक तू द फॉरेस्ट इफ यू डोंट दें जस्ट बिकॉज़ यू डिजायर दिस ऑफेंसिव डिजायर वे आर गोइंग तू पुट यू इन तू प्रिज़न एंड इन दिस वे दिस वाशमैन वेयर रेमिंग एंड रैंडिंग सो इट रिच्ड कृष्ण लिमिट ऑफ़ टॉलरेंस एंड हिस हेड वेन फ्लाइंग जस्ट वंस लैप दिस इट्स अलसो से देट कृष्ण आर एंड एक्टेड लाइक अन सोल एंड सेबर्ड हिस हेड जस्ट बेयर हैंड सेबर्ड हिस हेड फ्रॉम हिस बॉडी एंड सीइंग देट ऑल द आधा वाशमैन हिस कॉम्पेनियन दे ऑल रैंड सो कृष्ण एंड बालराम ओपन द बॉक्स द बैग द बंडल ऑफ़ क्लोथ दे सिलेक्टेड सांप दे वोर्ड दें ऑल द कॉवर्ड बॉयज़ अलसो ड्रेस्ड अप इन देट वे एंड दे वे जस्ट हैप्पीली मूविंग बट द वे दे ड्रेस्ड वेस्ट नॉट वेरी फिटिंग बिकॉज़ दे नॉट यूज्ड तू देट कैन दे जस्ट पुट ऑन द ड्रेस सो देयर वेस्ट अन वीवर हु कैम एंड वॉलेंटीयर तू ड्रेस देम अप तू पुट द ड्रेस प्रॉपर्टी सो कृष्ण एंड बालराम वेयर वेरी प्लीज़ विथ इट एंड कृष्ण से देट बिकॉज़ वे हैव डॉन दिस फॉर अस यू विल गेट द सेम फॉर्म एस माइन इन द स्पिरिचुअल वर्ल्ड एंड बालराम से यू विल गेट द सेम स्ट्रेंथ एस माइन एंड माय हैंडसमनेस सो दिस इस हाउ जस्ट बिकॉज़ दिस वीवर रेंडर्ड अन लिटिल सर्विस तू कृष्ण हो वंडरफुली कृष्ण रिवॉर्ड इट दें कृष्ण कैम अक्रॉस वन फ्लावर पर्सन एंड हिस नेम वेस्ट सुदामा सो सीइंग कृष्ण एंड बालराम सुदामा जस्ट इनवाइटेड हिम इनवाइटेड दे प्लीज़ कम तू माय प्लेस एंड दिस ही सिलेक्टेड द चॉइसेस्ट फ्लावर गार्डन एंड फ्लावर ऑर्नामेंट एंड ऑफर्ड दे तू ड्रेस देम डेकोरेटेड कृष्ण एंड बालराम एंड द कॉवर्ड बॉयज़ ऑल द कॉवर्ड बॉयज़ अलसो गो ड्रेस्ड अप इन देट फैंसी क्लोथ एंड सो ही डेकोरेटेड दें एंड दें अन ग्रुप ऑफ़ वैश्य कैम तू कृष्ण एंड बालराम एंड से व्हेन यू बिकम द किंग प्लीज़ रिकॉन्ज़ अस आज योर ओबेडियेंट सर्विस सो कृष्ण आस्ट देम कैन यू टेल मी वेयर इस देट बो केंट सो दिस वैश्य दे सस्पेक्टेड समथिंग दें दिस कृष्ण में गो एंड ब्रेक द बो एंड इफ कमसर फाइंड्स आउट देट एंड दे गिव द डायरेक्शन एंड कमसर में गेट अपसेट विथ देम सो दे डिन वांट तू टेल बट देयर वेस्ट सम लिटिल बॉयज़ देयर इसे कम कम वे नो वेयर इट इस विल टेक यू देयर सो दोस्त बॉयज़ एक्चुअली टू कृष्ण एंड बालराम देट एरिया वेस्ट गार्डिन एंड नो वन वेस्ट अलाउड तू गो इन द नेक्स्ट डे वेस्ट द धनुर यज्ञ सो अरेंजमेंट्स वेयर बीइंग मेड सो दे ट्राइड तू स्टॉप कृष्ण एंड बालराम कृष्ण बालराम वेव देम अस वेट वर्क्ड इन तू द बो एंड दिस बो वेस्ट सो हैवी इट इसे देट इट नीडेड 5000 पीपल तू कैरियर सो कृष्ण पिक्ड इट अप विथ द लेफ्ट हैंड ही बेंट इट स्ट्रांग द बो एंड दें ही पुल्ड इट द बो ब्रोक एंड द साउंड ऑफ़ ब्रेकिंग देयर बो वेस्ट सो लाउड देट दे एंटी अर्थ प्लैनेट्स स्टार्टेड तू शेक कमसर हर्ड द थिंग एंड ही इनक्वर्ट व्हाट हैवेन व्हाट हैवेन सम विलेज बॉयज़ कैम एंड ब्रोक द बो कमसर से किल देम ड्राइव देम आउट ऑफ़ दिस प्लेस एंड ही सेंट इस सोल्जर्स तू फाइट विथ इट तू टेक केयर ऑफ़ देट नाई यू रिमेंबर वेयर द बो कैम फ्रॉम हु गिव कमसर दिस बो हाउ मेनी ऑफ़ यू रिमेंबर देट लिट मी सी रेज़ योर हैंड हाउ मेनी ऑफ़ यू रिमेंबर देट ओके नाइनेश हु गिव इट तू कमसर पारशुरम रिमेंबर कमसर वेन तू महिंद्र माउंटेन ही लिफ्टेड द माउंटेन एंड प्लेस्ड इट 100 टाइम्स पारशुरम वेस्ट मेडिटेटिंग देयर हिस मेडिटेशन ब्रोक एंड ही वेन एंड यू अरोगन क्षत्रिय आई एम गोइंग तू किल यू एनीवे यू डिस्पले तू सम पावर लेट्स सी हाउ पावरफुल यू आर इफ यू कैन स्ट्रिंग द बो आई विल फाइट विथ यू इफ यू कैन ट्रिंग द बो दें आई विल किल यू यू रास्कल क्षत्रिय सो कमसर टू द बो ही स्ट्रांग इट पारशुरम वेस्ट वेरी इंप्रेस्ड एंड दें कमसर से सर आई एम नॉट अन क्षत्रिय आई एम अन डीमन एंड सो दिस इस हाउ ही विन वन द फेवर ऑफ़ पारशुरम पारशुरम से ओके आई विल गिव यू दिस बो दिस बो वेस्ट दिस इस एक्चुअली विष्णु इस बो ही गिव इट तू लॉर्ड शिवा तू किल त्रिपुरा सूर्य एंड दें दिस बो ग्रेडुअली कैम तू मी सो नाउ आई एम गिविंग इट तू एंड इफ सम्बैदी व्हेन सम्मान ब्रेक्स दिस बो दें दैट विल इंडिकेट देट यू आर गोइंग तू डाय व्हेन द बो वेस्ट ब्रोक वेल बी ब्रोकेन दें यू विल डाय सो कमसर गो द मैसेज ए वन आफ्टर अनदर यू वेस्ट गेटिंग मैसेजेस एंड द गार्ड्स ट्राइड तू अटैक कृष्ण एंड बालराम दे डिन आवे न्यू वेपन सो दे टू दोस्त तू ब्रोकेन पार्ट ऑफ़ द बो एंड विद दोस्त तू ब्रोकेन पार्ट ऑफ़ द बो वाइप्ड आउट द होल आर्मी हाउ इस इट पॉसिबल? व्हाय इस नॉट पॉसिबल? कैन यू वाइप आउट अन आर्मी ऑफ़ एंट्स? व्हाट विल टेक यू? सो फॉर कृष्ण एंड बालराम वाइपिंग आउट कमसर आर्मी वेस्ट समथिंग लेफ्ट सो दिस इस अगेन हाउ वे हैव तू लुक आते कृष्ण आर अस पास टाइम्स जनरली वन में से हाउ इस इट पॉसिबल? हाउ कैन वन पर्सन फाइट अगेंस्ट मिलियंस ऑफ़ सोल्जर्स व्हाट इस इंपॉसिबल फॉर द सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ़ गॉड हिंद सेम थिंग हैवेन व्हेन रावन सॉरी शार काल एंड दूषण तू ब्रदर्स ऑफ़ रावन अटैक्ड रामचंद्र रामचंद्र डिन एवं लेट लक्ष्मण फाइट ही से लक्ष्मण यू गार्ड सीता यू प्रोटेक्ट सीता एंड अलोन ही फॉट एंड वाइप्ड आउट द एंटी आर्मी ओनली ही लेट वन पर्सन तू ब्लीम एंड रिपोर्ट तू रावन व्हाट एक्चुअली हैवेन सो एनीवे दिस इस हाउ वंडरफुल लॉर्ड अस पास टाइम्स आर एंड दिस इस बाय दिस इस हाउ बाय जस्ट हीरिंग दिस पास टाइम्स आर फेथ इन हिम बिकम्स एस्टेब्लिश्ड एंड वे अलसो गेट अन ओपोरर्चुनिटी नॉट तू बिलीव इन हिम वे गेट अन ओपोरर्चुनिटी तू थिंक कृष्ण इस नॉट गॉड डीमन अलसो गेट अन ओपोरर्चुनिटी ओह दिस अन फैरी टेल्स हाउ कैन आई बे सो दिस इस द डिफरेंस बिटवीन अन डिवोटी एंड अन डीमन अन डिवोटी एक्सेप्ट्स एवरीथिंग देट कृष्ण डास नो मैटर हो वंडरफुल इट इस वेयर अन डीमन ही इस ऑलवेज फाइंडिंग अन ओपोरर्चुनिटी तू एस्टेब्लिश्ड देट कृष्ण इस नॉट द सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ़ गॉड हिंद कृष्ण इस जस्ट अन ऑर्डिनरी पर्सन सो दिस इस हाउ कृष्ण एंड बालराम अपीयर्ड इन मथुरा एंड दें ऑल द सिटिजंस वेयर स्ट्रक विथ वंडर दिस तू लिटिल बॉयज़ जस्ट वाइप्ड आउट द होल रेगमेंट ऑफ़ कमसर अलसो अनदर थिंग लाइक देट हैवेन व्हेन हनुमान वेन तू श्रीलंका व्हेन व्हेन हनुमान वेन तू लंका रावन सेंट वन आर्मी फोल्ड रेगमेंट हेडेड बाय हिल ओन सान एंड हनुमान पिक्ड अप अन इरन रोड एंड विद देट ही वाइप्ड आउट द होल आर्मी इंक्लूडिंग रावन अस सान सो दिस इस हाउ वंडरफुल द सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ़ गॉड हिंद इस एंड दिस इस हाउ वंडरफुली लॉर्ड डिवोटीज़ बिकम एंपॉवर्ड नॉट ओनली देट द लॉर्ड हिमसेल्फ डास दिस वंडरफुल थिंग्स ही मेक हिस डिवोटीज़ अलसो परफॉर्म ऑल कैंड ऑफ़ वंडरफुल थिंग नाउ आर द फैरी टेल्स इट्स अप तू यू तू डिसाइड बट इफ यू आस्ट मी आई विल से देयर नॉट ओनली द ट्रुथ बट देयर अब्सोल्यूट ट्रुथ सो दें दे वेन बैक तू वेयर द आदर कॉवर्ड पीपल वेयर स्टे देट नाइट देट नाइट एवरीवन स्लेप पीसफुली ओनली तू पर्सन्स कुड़ स्लीप वन इस नांदा महाराज नांदा महाराज वेस्ट इन एंग्जायटी देट वे आर इन कमसर टेरिचरी हु नोस व्हाट मिंट कमसर डू आउट द मिल ऑफ़ द नाइट सो दे क्रिएटेड अन काइंड ऑफ़ बैडिकेट विथ ऑल द बुलाकार्स देट दे दे इन अन हाफ मुन सर्गो द बैर जस्ट एंड द आदर पर्सन हु कुड़ स्लीप द होल नाइट वेस्ट कमसर कमसर वेस्ट थ्रू द नाइट ही वेस्ट आइंग ऑल कैंड ऑफ़ नाइटमेयर ही सॉल द क्रिचर्स विदाउट अन हेड मूविंग अराउंड एंड आते वन पॉइंट ही सॉल देट ही हिमसेल्फ हस डोंट हैव अन हेड एंड दें आते वन पॉइंट ही सॉल देट हिस बॉडी इस नॉट कैस्टिंग अन इस शैडो एंड इन दिस वे ही स्टार्टेड तू हैव नाइटमेयर स्टे अप द होल नाइट सीइंग ऑल कैंड ऑफ़ नाइट फ्राइटनिंग एक्सपीरियंस इन द मॉर्निंग दे गो ड्रेस्ड अप कृष्ण एंड बालराम एंड अलावन विद द कॉवर्ड बॉयज़ दे जस्ट तू द कमसर अस पैलेस कमसर अलरेडी मेड द अरेंजमेंट देट फर्स्ट अरेंजमेंट तू किल कृष्ण एंड बालराम वेस्ट अन तेरेबल एलिफेंट कॉल्ड कुबलायपीरा यू रिमेंबर कुबलायपीरा हाउ कमसर गो अन कुबलायपीरा कुबलायपीरा एक्चुअली बिलॉन्ग तू जरासंध एंड वन डे दिस एलिफेंट वेन लूज द द टाइम जरासंध विद द इंटेंशन तू कॉन्कर द होल वर्ल्ड ही वेस्ट he was, he was, he camped on the bank of Jamuna. And this elephant was there. Subash, sit on a chair. You can come forward. So... And it started to, that elephant went all over destroying everything. At that time, Kamsa was wrestling with some wrestlers. And all the wrestlers, seeing the elephant, mad elephant, ran away. But Kamsa confronted that elephant and a terrible fight ensued. And finally, Kamsa picked up that elephant and started to swing it overhead and let it go. And that elephant went flying for eighty miles and landed in Jarasandhar's camp. Jarasandhar wondered, “What's the matter? How this elephant keep flying?” So then he found out what Kamsa had done. So he was so impressed that with Kamsa's strength, that he not only made allies with Kamsa. Kamsa was a young boy at that time. And he offered his two daughters, Asti and Prapati in marriage to Kamsa. And he gave this elephant as a dowry to Kamsa. So that's how Kamsa inherited this elephant Kubalaya Pira. And it had the strength of ten thousand wild elephants. Such a powerful elephant. So Kamsa's plan was that when Krishna and Balaram would come, that elephant would kill them. And he told, he trained his elephant driver with that. That when these two boys come, kill them by this elephant. So when Krishna and Balaram came to the gate, city gate or palace gate, he saw the elephant. So he told the elephant driver, “Please move out, make room for me to go.” The elephant driver said, “Who are you? Krishna and Balaram. We came from the forest of Brindavan. The fancy dress that you are seeing, you're wearing, it actually belongs to your master, Kamsa. And we have been invited by your master. So you shouldn't block our way, you should let us in.” And at that point, the elephant driver charged. They actually have a thing called ankush. It's a god. One side is like a spear and the other is like a hook. So this is how they control the elephant. And so, and as soon as he did that, the elephant charged. An elephant wrapped Krishna with its trunk. But Krishna slipped out of that. And then Krishna played with the elephant. It has been described, just as Krishna used to play hide and seek in the forest of Brindavan, Krishna was playing hide and seek with the elephant. Krishna went behind the elephant. When the elephant went this way looking for him, Krishna went that way. And in this way, then at one time Krishna went under the belly of the elephant. And the elephant started to turn around in cycles, in circles and couldn't find Krishna. But the elephant also can detect the object by smell. So when it figured out that Krishna is under his belly, so he stepped out and tried to get Krishna. And then at one point Krishna tripped the elephant, that the elephant fell. And when the elephant fell, Krishna also was lying on the ground. Then the elephant got up and tried to get Krishna, stamp it Krishna. So the elephant was trying to put his foot and Krishna kept on moving. So in this way Krishna, for a long time Krishna played with the elephant. And then finally Krishna held the elephant by its trunk and started to pull. And at one point Krishna was holding the trunk and pulling the elephant and Balaram was holding the tail and pulling. And this way being pulled from both side, the elephant was in a great distress. And then finally Krishna just grabbed the elephant by its trunk and smashed it on the ground. And then with his fist, he kept on punching the elephant. Not, first he punched with fear his hand, but then he, when it fell, it pulled the tusk of the elephant, a huge tusk. Pulled it out of his body. And with the tusk, it started to beat the elephant. And this is how this elephant Kubalaya Pira was killed. So and carrying those two tusks as two trophies, Krishna and Balaram entered into the arena. And it has been described in Shri Madh Bhagavatam, how different people saw Krishna in different ways. Mallanam Ashani. The wrestlers, who were actually about to wrestle with Krishna and Balaram, they saw him as thunderbolt Ashani. The king saw him as the best of the king, or as the best of the human being. Now, the human, ordinary people saw him as the best of human being. The king saw him as the punisher, the supreme punisher. The ladies saw him as the personified cupid. The jodhus saw him as an intimate relative. The cowherd boys saw him as their friend. So in this way, different people, different individuals saw Krishna in different ways. And so this is how Krishna and Balaram just entered there. It's a beautiful description. Their faces were already decorated with sandalwood. And now this, the, the blood from that elephant's body kind of came in, kind of drops on their face. And it looked like they are decorated with white chandan and red chandan. Sandalwood, there is a red sandalwood also. And they just entered there. So then Chanur and Mushtika, these two wrestlers, giants, they were, they challenged. “For the pleasure of the king, display your ability to wrestle. The king heard about your wrestling skill. So he want now by exhibiting your wrestling skill with us, you please the king.” Krishna said, “The wrestling takes place between the equals. You are like such a big person, we are just little boys. Let other boys come, we will wrestle with them.” So Chanush said, “You are not little boys. Nobody knows who you are. Like you, what you have done just little while ago, that shows that you are not just some little boys. You killed Kubalaya Pira. Nobody could actually kill this elephant. It has strength of ten thousand elephants.” So anyway, consider that this is an opportunity to please the king and if the king is pleased, he'll give you rewards. So come fight. So they started to fight. And people also were shouting, “That's unfair, that's unfair. How can these two little boys fight with these two giants? What comes out in pain and heat, wrestling went on.” And sometimes it seemed that these two little boys are in difficulty. Chanur and Mushtik, with such powerful blow, they're hitting them. He's creating excitement. So first he is allowing the enemies to beat him and then Krishna got hold of them. And Balaram got hold of Krishna, lifted them and started to swing them overhead. And then smashed them on the ground. The gata began and hit Krishna on the chest. Another hand, it seemed like hitting of that, seemed like somebody is throwing a lotus to an elephant. But then Krishna hit Chanur and he started to vomit blood. And this way, for a long time they fought. And then finally Krishna picked him up overhead. This is Krishna's favorite way of killing the demons. One of the favorite ways. Kept on spinning him, spinning him, smashed him on the ground. Chanur was dead. And Mushtik also was killed by Balaram. Then their three brothers, Kutar, Shal and Toshal came and attacked. But they also got killed by Krishna and Balaram. So at that point, Kamsa actually stood up from his dais, from his throne in the dunda, elevated mancha, elevated seat. And he started to shout. Throw them out of this city. Arrest all these cowherd people. Kill Ugrasen, kill Basudev. And when he was raving and ranting like that, Krishna from the arena jumped up onto the, that elevated mancha, elevated stage. Kamsa already pulled out his sword and a shield. Although he attacked Krishna with weapons and Krishna was bare hand, just with one hand, he just slapped Kamsa. Avoiding the attack of the sword, he just slapped Kamsa. And Kamsa's tarban went flying. And Kamsa was trying to kill Krishna, but Krishna kept on, with Kamsa also Krishna played around for a while. And then finally, he caught Kamsa by his hair. And he threw Kamsa from that elevated stage onto the wrestling arena. And then he jumped himself there. And he, sitting on Kamsa's chest, he kept on punching Kamsa. Kamsa was dead. And then Krishna caught Kamsa by his hair and started to moving around the arena. Just as a lion after killing an elephant moves around, dragging it around. And everybody was excited, started to sing the glory of Krishna. But Kamsa's eight brothers came to attack Krishna and Balaram. Krishna and Balaram killed all of them. And seeing all that, other kings also led them. They ran away, giving up the hope of winning half the kingdom. The bow has already broken and now Kamsa is gone. So they felt that there is no hope. So this is how Krishna actually killed Kamsa. And then he went to the prison, released Ugrasen, Basudev and Devaki. And Basudev and Devaki were so overwhelmed to see their two sons. They embraced them and started to, they completely forgot who they were and started to behave with them just like father and mother who had been united with their lost children after so many years. It's a very, very touching sight, the way Basudev and Devaki greeted Krishna. And there Krishna made Ugrasen the king of Mathura. And so this is how the killing of Kamsa is accomplished. But the story doesn't end here. We'll continue at four o'clock. If anybody has a question, can ask. Yeah. That was Shridama, one of the coward boyfriends of Krishna. You see, Shridama was guarding Krishna's chamber. When Krishna was actually with Viraja, other Gopi. And Shridama was guarding the gate. So Radharani came, Shridama stopped. So Radharani became so upset that she cursed him that he would become a demon. So that's how Shridama actually became sankhachura demon. And Shridama said that because, “Without any fault of mine, you cursed me, I curse you that for hundred years you'll become separated from Krishna.” Yes. Dhritharshra's liberation. Oh, when, Dhritharshra actually left his body in the forest. In the forest fire, yeah. Generally, they get sajyajamukti, marching in the body of Krishna. Yeah, effulgence of Krishna. Yes. Yeah, Shikanta, you have a question? Yeah, okay. And then I'll take care of it. Yes. Yeah, Ugrasen was the baby. Mother was actually Padmavati, Ugrasen's real wife, Ugrasen's wife. Whereas Kamsa was actually, you know, a son of a demon in the womb of Padmavati. Yes.
Whenever I read the scriptures, whenever I start to read the scriptures, I'm very enthusiastic, like Krishna, Supa, Abhava. After reading the verses a few days, my ego starts healing. And sometimes I'm bored, sometimes I sleep. So what can I do to prevent such, I mean, it's a cloud, it's a cloud, I want, like, because he is the passing of the religion and you don't get to somehow, after some time, I will...
Well, as I said yesterday, you know, philosophy becomes difficult to understand or retain interest. But stories? Do you like to read stories?
I read Krishna also, but like...
What happens when you read Krishna? Do you feel the same? Okay.
But in some chapters, it's like before time, there is too much glorification of Krishna. I mean, it's very nice obviously. However, sometimes it seems like the paradox of the feeling and so I think of... Although it's, obviously it's...
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So when that happens, you know, if you feel that you're losing interest, then what you can do is, up to what extent you have read, try to contemplate on that, try to meditate on that, try to think about that. Right? And in glorification, if it is becoming kind of little too much to digest, then just again contemplate on whatever you have read so far. So glorification, they are saying like Krishna, you are the supreme personality of God. You are the supreme creator. You have killed so many demons and so try to at least meditate on that, you know. Okay? Give him the mic.
Thank you for the lecture. I would like to, when you say the beginning, you talked about the chanting and the, and the following progress principles, and nothing is about standing, to be... After three years for quite a long, I tried really steady with my chanting and progress principles. And I get to a point that it's difficult to maintain. It's like a sport, climbing a mountain. When you are near the top, it's really easy to come down because it's so difficult to reach the top of the mountain. So once you are in that higher, how can you keep continuing on the middle of the top? But that's basically how I would go down.
Okay, if you are tired of climbing up, take some rest. Relax. And execute your devotional service happily. And never let it become too troublesome, too difficult.
Thank you, Mahal.
Yes, Ananda?
Much as I would say, same as Brahman liberation. And the second question is, does one come back again to this material world after...
Yeah. The question is whether sajyajamukti is same as Brahman rival liberation. Yes, sajyajamukti is merging into brahmajyoti, right? And often from sajyajamukti they come down. Like for example, Hirannakshipu Hirannaksha got sajyajamukti, right? And they stayed in that until Treta Yuga began. Then they came from that situation to become Ravan and Kubhokarna. Then again they were killed and again went to sleep in sajyajamukti. Again they woke up in Daupar Yuga as Shishupal and Dantabakra. But vaykuntamukti, they don't come down, from sajyajamukti they come down.
Yesterday, you were talking about the fact that the words of the Brahman are pure and holy. They come true, have to be true. And so I've heard, for example, some devotee, maybe in a festival, where he is sitting in a silent street, you know, people come, they say, is it vegan? And he says, yeah, yeah, it's vegan. Also there is butter, milk products. And I said, why did you do that if it's not like that? He said, you know, they die the day after. It's just for the fact that they said, they thought that we were vegan. They could not, they could also, how to interpret that.
Yeah. Well, what I said yesterday is that the words of the Brahmanas, these sages are actually Brahmanas. Meaning they are situated in the mode of goodness. And because they are situated in the mode of goodness, whatever they say becomes true. Because they are such, they are situated in Brahman. Brahmana means one which situated in the Brahman realized platform. So their words never go in vain. And their words never go in vain because they never lie. They always tell the truth. And because they always tell the truth, whatever comes out of their mouth is also the own truth. All right? And sometimes devotees lie. I don't know what to say, like, maybe for the sake of preaching, one can take this poetic license. But it's better not to. What's the harm in saying that, no, this is not vegan, this is vegetarian? But you can take it just a little bit. Because they are not as staunch as we are. You see, we are very staunch, no meat eating. So even if there is a trace of, you know, egg in something, we don't take that. Even if there is a trace of enzyme, cow rene, you know, we don't take that. So we are very strict, but the vegans are not so strict. We can tell them, well, there's a little ghee is there, like it's not milk. And by best is to explain and convince, then, you know, take the easy way of lying. Give him the mic.
Hare Krishna. My, I know totally that Vasudan is indication of Shukta Shakti. Shukta Shakti, but Vasudan, Devoki, they worship like that to have Krishna as their son. So we don't have this, any soup like the, Devoki, Dasa Dhan and Nandawad green, as Krishna will be actual sarah as my son. So, but Vasudan and Devoki, they have only desire to have only their son. There is no intention to sarah. So there is no sarah, so that is it. It is also pure goodness?
Well, yeah, yeah, it is pure goodness. Like, they wanted Krishna to appear. But at that time, their main focus was to just have Krishna as their son. They did not have any consideration at that time to render devotional service to him. You get the point, like? Because they did not desire to have, to render service to Krishna, they simply wanted to have Krishna as their son. That's why they got Krishna as their son, Basudel. But didn't really get the, get the opportunity to have a loving exchange with him. At least at that time, later on they had. Okay, so I will, and now we have five minutes, we can have a little keep.
Hare Krishna, thank you very much for watching. All the devotees can... The quiz in the chat box, devotees can quickly solve the quiz. And meanwhile, we will read the code by Gurumaharaj. So Gurumaharaj is saying, November 18, the highest activity is not to personally experience a loving relationship with Krishna. The highest engagement is the distribution of that love to others. Distribution of Krishna preem is the highest spiritual activity. Shrimad Bhagavatam, first kanto, fifth chapter, 40th verse, Jan 18, number 2005. Shri Gurumaharaj Ki Ja. Devotees can solve the quiz. Okay, we can see the results. Twenty-three participants till now. And at first we have, please move it, Sita Anandi Devi Dasi. Sita Anandi Mataji at first, at 67% accuracy, 3,460 points. Arpita Mataji, 50% accuracy, 2,740. And then Ishwarya Adikamataji, 50% accuracy, 2,390. Devi Damodar Prabhu, 50% accuracy, 2,330. Roni Prabhu, 33% accuracy, 1,710. And then we have Radhakeswar Prabhu, 33% accuracy, 1,616. Once you can refresh it again, you can see the final result. Your desire is still solving. Okay, same participant, 23. At tops, Sita Anandi Mataji, then Arpita Paul Mata. Again, this is the same result. Nikapur Prabhu, Radhakeswar Prabhu, Indu Vodni Mata. Okay, this is new entry and then Arpita Shakhidasi, Sucharu Shakhidasi, then Sambit, then Premavat, then Ambi. Okay, so this quiz will be available for solving later. You can share with other devotees as well. This will be posted in Bhaktichar Sami Gurumaharaj group. So thank you very much for joining. Hare Krishna. As all in as Bhaktichar Sami Gurumaharaj Ki Ja. Shraparapati Ki Ja. Arunthakuti Ashrambrind Ki Ja. Gauri Prima Anandi, Hariyan.